Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the March 11, 2025 Regular Council Meeting. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Reeves.
Here.
Vice Mayor Yao.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Olinger.
Here.
Councilmember Ramikas.
Here.
Councilmember Russell.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
And Councilmember Short.
Here.
Any changes to the agenda if not approval?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Pledge allegiance, Mr. Short.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. On the consent agenda this evening is uncollectible personal property tax account write-offs the 2019 tax year, treasures reports, and minutes of previous meetings.
And move the agenda?
Second. Discussion? Discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion?
Uh-uh.
Okay. I'd just like to hear the manager explain what the write-offs are about.
We can do that at the end, at the manager's report, manager's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
No.
We'll do that later. Public forum. The public forum is the opportunity for town citizens, visitors, and group to speak or bring to our attention any town government-related issue. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. Groups are the questions I have a spokesperson. Is there anyone who would like to speak this evening? Come on up to the podium, sir.
Hi, good evening. I'm Andrew Dowdy. I live at 602 South Blue Ridge Avenue. Tonight, I wanted to rise to make a few points on your next agenda item, which is the Culpeper Technology Campus Proffer, Noise Proffer. This is the sixth meeting of town officials I've attended that's discussed this contentious issue. I know you're probably tired of seeing me. I know we're probably all tired of looking at this. This is the first meeting I've attended pursuant to an independent consultant's report. And I'd like to commend the council and the town for hiring a consultant to take a look at this issue. I wrote a letter, I think, to all of you a couple of weeks ago. Unfortunately, neither my letter nor any other comments that have been entered into the record since December appear to be in tonight's agenda. And for the public record, I would ask that my letter be included, at least in the public record, post facto, so that, and the other comments as well. Appears like no comments since December are included in your package tonight. In my letter, I laid out four basic points, my takeaways from consultant's report. One was that the existing standard, which is what the proffer currently says is antiquated. Doesn't mean it's stupid or wrong, it's simply old-fashioned. It's not how we measure sound today. Two, even though it's antiquated, the existing standard, as the consultant reconstructs it, has a lower DBA, a lower A-weighted noise level than the proffer, about five decibels. The third thing is that he points out that even so, a decibel, an A-weighted, a DBA standard is not adequate to capture the low-frequency noise of a data center. The fourth thing he points out is that these standards typically do not exempt generator testing. Now fortunately, it looks like today, at about 12:30 this afternoon, the proffer's been changed, so the applicant no longer requests to exempt generate, routine generator testing to the noise standard. However, the proffer still lacks these two different areas. Low weight, low-frequency noise is not particularly covered, and the DBA standard that they're proposing is really too high. Whatever the council does tonight, I think we should follow the consultant's recommendation and come up with a new noise standard to replace the old one, not just in the zoning standard, but also in Chapter 13, which is the nuisance standard. And that noise standard should include some kind of probably DBC measure as well as a DBA, something that you can measure. And fortunately, Prince William County has been working on this for like the last year and a half. It looks like they're coming up with a standard accepted by both the industry and the citizens, particularly for data centers. And so some, a lot of the work may already be done. But anyway, I would, I would like to see the council commit to updating our noise standard to protect the citizens. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's David DeJarnet, and I represent three family-owned properties, 505 Germana Highway, 511 Germana Highway, 1710 Broad Street. Mayor Reeves, members of the council, Mr. Hyvley, and members of town staff, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak about the upcoming zoning overhaul project for the town of Culpeper. I realize that tonight's town council meeting is not one of the four public hearings that are scheduled to discuss the issue. However, I feel that the town's attempt to rezone a majority of the town's commercial and industrial properties is too big of an issue to wait until next Tuesday. Imagine my surprise when I made a couple social media posts regarding this issue, and I started receiving word back from council members stating that no one's property was being rezoned. This may not have been the intent of council or staff, however, I don't want to see this as a result or an unintended consequence of this zoning overhaul. The word overhaul is generally used in cases when something is being fixed because the current item is old, outdated, and sometimes worn out. I'm not sure that we need to overhaul anything right now, as I see a lot of new construction in the town, a lot of new rooftops, and Culpeper being known throughout the Commonwealth as being user-friendly. Maybe we just need a tune-up instead of an overhaul. That would address the issues of new regulations surrounding data centers, new rules and directions for recovery homes located in the town, and parking regulations for new construction when it occurs. Culpeper has been the envy of many other towns throughout the Commonwealth because of our good balance of light industrial, heavy industrial, commercial properties, and residential base that seems to be growing very rapidly. Do not rezone the small industrial and commercial properties to a downsized status that would inhibit their potential uses in the future, or to a zoning status that could reduce the value of their properties by 20% to 40%. We will be having more folks to attend the first planning commission meeting next Tuesday night on March 18. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Jarnet. Anyone else?
Everybody, Brent Amos, 801 Southeast Street. First off, Mr. Yao, your tan looks great from your vacation. So I want to echo Mr. Dowdy's sentiment. The independent study was very informative. One of the major concerns that I have and a lot of my fellow neighbors have are regarding the request. So shifting to a DBA weighted decibel makes perfect sense. But the request to go to 60 represents a roughly 50% increase in audible noise from the data center, if you look at it from where it is now and what's accepted with the antiquated system. The report clearly indicates that it translates to a 56 DBA. Every 10 decibels is logarithmic. It's 10 times more sound pressure. That 10 times sound pressure is equal to twice the audible noise. So a 50% increase in that is significant. So I would ask that while you do approve the DBA regulations, that you approve it at a 56 decibel DBA limit. I also echo Mr. Dowdy's sentiments. The report clearly aligns with the J-Lark study, that DBC also needs to be adopted to deal with the frequencies that are going to be emanating from the equipment that is located there. As the report clearly indicates, generators, as well as rooftop air handlers, are nuisances that can only be identified in the DBC decimal range. So I please request you to do those two things as it relates to the proffer. And then moving forward, I know that the town is undergoing significant changes to the zoning, as the gentleman before me identified. With that, I also ask that you look at Chapter 13 for the nuisance noise section and address this issue, because as I understand it, while Copper Ridge proffers have been approved and the Culpeper Technology Center proffers have been approved, that those now override the current zoning requirements, and the only way to enforce anything is by utilizing that document in Chapter 13 to make sure we're safe. And by going with the DBA, I appreciate that change, because it allows me to use this handy-dandy professional noise meter to measure it regularly, because the proffers always also indicate that to call the police for a nuisance, I have to be able to measure it. So it's a big help, so I appreciate that. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, councilors. My name is Jessica Amos. I also live at 801 Southeast Street. Copper Ridge and CTC should have never been approved. The thoughtless placement on the highest point in town, directly next to homes, a national cemetery, and our historic areas will have foreseeable negative impacts on our community, and it happened on your watch. But the ball is in your court to mitigate the major issues, with noise being one of the most dire. The noise engineer that you hired clearly confirmed our concerns that the CTC developers' proposed standards would allow a noticeably higher volume of noise in residential areas compared to the current standards. And with CTC located on the highest point in town, the sound will radiate across Culpeper. As a result of this report, I ask you to do three things. One, approve the DBA standard of measurement as recommended by the report, but with a 56 DBA daytime and 51 DBA nighttime limit, which aligns with the current noise ordinance and the current adopted proffer for CTC. Two, adopt an additional CBC standard to ensure all frequencies are accounted for. As the report highlights, DBA does not adequately account for noise produced by data centers. And three, and most importantly, adopt a noise ordinance for data centers. As I understand it, under Virginia law, an approved proffer supersedes the town's zoning ordinance, but proffers cannot supersede the town's nuisance ordinance covering noise. You have a responsibility for the health and welfare of our citizens. With all the information out there and all of the real-life case studies here in Virginia, at this point, anyone who says that data centers aren't noisy are either grossly uninformed, misinformed, or in bed with the data centers. This is not a NIMBY issue for East Street, this is an issue for all of Culpeper. We need elected officials who are responsible to the needs of the citizens. So I ask you, please, do the right thing for our community and put some protections in place. Here's your opportunity. Please don't screw up again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sarah Parmally, representing the Piedmont Environmental Council. First, I want to sincerely thank the council for taking the time and the effort to become better informed about the issue of data center noise. I would also like to thank Councilmember Ramikas, and especially for asking that the backup generator testing be removed from the exemptions, and for the applicants' further removal of the exemption of generator operation during power shortages. Thank you very much for listening to our concerns on that front. This map before you was included in the materials we submitted to the council during the Copper Ridge rezoning, and I wanted to bring this to your attention again, because it represents a worst-case scenario that we are trying to help the town avoid. This is a model of where we can expect significant data center noise pollution in the town. It was developed by the late Dr. John Liver, a NASA scientist who devoted much of his retirement to trying to address the issue of data center noise. He based this model on noise produced by data centers in Prince William County. One of the concerns that we expressed with Copper Ridge was the cumulative noise pollution from, was the potential for the cumulative noise pollution from both campuses, you know, the impact from that cumulative pollution, even if both campuses were operating within the allowable limits. This cumulative impact could see the baseline noise level of East Davis Street jumping from the roughly 50 DBA, which it was this evening, to over 60 DBA, which would represent a doubling in the amount of ambient noise. We can expect a significant jump like this to negatively impact the way downtown Culpeper sounds and feels, which may reduce the town's appeal as a travel destination. Other residential areas will also be extremely impacted. Prince William County has learned the hard way that data center noise is a problem in residential areas. They are actively working to change their ordinances to better protect communities from this pollution. The noise limits you are looking to grant to the Culpeper Technology Campus today, which were granted to Copper Ridge in 2023, are the same noise limits that have failed Prince William County and that that county is trying to move away from. We are not opposed to updating the noise language to use a modern method of measurement. We are opposed to allowing more noise pollution. We encourage the council to push back on the narrative that they have to accept a standard that has failed to protect existing communities from noise pollution, especially when that noise pollution is, the cause of that noise pollution is potentially receiving a 40% tax break. Hoping that the worst doesn't happen is not a solution, but putting strong language in your proffers and your ordinances can be. We continue to ask the council to push for better, and would be happy to facilitate discussions about what that should be. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Larry Green, Reeves, Virginia. I sat back and I was listening to a lot of this. I asked you to think of ramifications if you were to pass something like this. You'd have to shut the co-op down, because I can be inside Walmart and hear the female run. The Rochester Ropes, their emergency generators, you might as well shut the whole town down, because they've all got emergency generators and they're not going by this code. This will do nothing but set an example to put Culpeper back in the Stone Ages. Are they going to be any louder than a tractor trailer going down Main Street with his jake brake on, where we're going to put a sign in the street, "No jake brakes"? Some towns in Pennsylvania do that. All I ask you to do is apply common sense to what we have got to have, and not a pipe dream. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Philip Kouser. I am probably, I look around here, I'm probably the only one that is directly affected by a data center. Part of it's on my land. I'm in favor for the sound proffer. We need some type of noise, but just like the gentleman said, I can hear the co-op from my house. It's no problem. We're going to have noise in whatever we do, just how we regulate it, how we approve it. I'm all in favor for the proffer. We need to... They wouldn't call data centers 13 years ago when I was electrician. We called them tech centers. My brother is still wiring data centers. The technology in the last six years that he started, been with Dean for 25 years, his study changing. It's getting better and better. They're getting quieter. So I'm all in favor for this proffer. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, council. My name is William Camano, 2015 Chestnut Drive. So I currently work in a data center in Prince William County. I see this as, anyone else as a resident here in Culpeper, it's a concern, anything new that comes to town, right? But I'm here to speak, speak to you as a proud resident that supports the data centers. And the reason for it is, I, along with many other residents in this town, have to commute long hours to, to go to and from work. That takes away time from our family, right? This gives us an opportunity for, not only for us to get some of that time back, but we don't have to leave our county. We don't have to leave this town, you know? This can afford some good paying jobs for a lot of our local residents, as well as a great opportunity to strengthen our economy. So at the end of the day, it's about creating a future where we don't have to leave home to find these types of opportunities. Our county is not just a place for us to live, it's a place to work, to innovate, and to succeed. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name is Joe Kendra. I'm a proud resident of Culpeper, as well as a campus manager for Stack Infrastructure at the data center in Prince William County. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight and support the sound proffer amendment for the Culpeper Technology Center. As many of you have had visited the data center in Manassas and seen firsthand, from your experience of walking through it, how minimal the sound impacts from these modern data center facilities are. Unlike residents who have often relied solely on media reports, you've had the unique opportunity to witness reality for yourselves, modern data centers. Unfortunately, without the direct experience, the public sometimes relies directly on media and the false truths that may come out from some of the media reports that have been out. Beyond low noise levels, data centers bring sufficient economic growth to the communities. Their first impact expands far beyond the substantial tax revenue they generate. The real value relies on investment companies like Stack Infrastructure, which make local people, businesses, and others. With my extensive experience in the industry, I have firsthand seen how data centers can drive job creations, both during construction and long-time operations and maintenance of these facilities. For example, Stack actively recruits operational technicians through an apprenticeship program with partnership through Nova Community College. The initiative provides local residents with an opportunity to earn a two-year degree or certificate, leading to high-paying careers. In as little as 16 months of training, students can secure a job in the data center operations field for $40 an hour, starting wages. To bring this closer to home, I want to highlight that eight, eight Culpeper residents actually work for Stack currently in the Prince William County area. Every day, they endure the long commute from Prince William County. Approving this amendment moves us one step closer to reducing these commutes, allowing these residents to spend more time with their families while keeping their earnings and contributions within the Culpeper community. With this amendment, we have the opportunity to strengthen Culpeper's economy, create new career paths for residents, and position this community as a hub of innovation and growth. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
It's really old. Good evening, council. My name is Charlotte Cole. I live on Blue Ridge Avenue. A lot has been said on the subject of noise associated with the construction and operation of data centers. In fact, a lot, a lot has been said about data centers in general in our community. I believe that not since the Civil War has the town of Culpeper faced such an existential threat to the quality of life of its citizens as the approval to cite data centers, specifically CTC and Copper Ridge, on the highest point in town, just yards away from homes, schools, daycare centers, and the final resting place of people who selflessly serve their country. If you can find one greater existential threat in our history, natural or man-made, please correct me. We, your taxpayers, voters, constituents, whichever name you view us as, feel threatened. Whenever people feel threatened, they double down. We've done that. And in doing so, we have amassed an immense amount of information, independent and unbiased, not just from media, but from scientific evidence. Independent and unbiased information, and we have provided it to you so that you wouldn't just enjoy the information from the companies who stand to profit from these facilities. Please know that we do appreciate you engaging a noise consultant, and we urge you to consider that science as you update the town's noise and nuisance ordinances. It's really important that both reflect the same protective requirements. Technology moves at the speed of light. The item I have here was all the rage just 32 years ago. It was allowing folks to speak with one another while in transit. Today, we use this tiny little thing, comparatively speaking. Cell phones have come a long way in just over three decades. So too has computing, and developments in computing continue to move at the speed of light, such that the need for facilities of which we are discussing, data centers, could become obsolete in far less than three decades. It's important to know that already, Microsoft, the world's largest data center operator and developer, has, through a combination of canceled leases, pullbacks on statements of qualifications, cancellations of land parcels, and deliberate expiration of letters of intent, effectively abandoned data center expansion equivalent to over 14% of its current capacity. Why? Because there is a huge uncertainty about the commercial viability of AI, which is what this whole rage is about. All this is according to the renowned market analyst TD Cowan, who recently reported by, and was recently reported by the reputable, reputable technology reporter Ed Zitron. So noise concerns aside, energy, water, heat islands, and now this market uncertainty, we really hope that you all will continue to debate the noise in particular and come to the right decision to protect your citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Good evening. So my name is Kyle McMillan. I'm that, part of that growing population that the gentleman was talking about earlier. I'm a proud member of IBW Local 26, and the data center industry is our, is our bread and butter. We have 16,000 area jurisdictional members, but I want to say hundreds of Culpeper residents are members of our, of our union. The data center is very, very important for the next generation of workers, and I can say personally, I'm in personnel, and I find young people or even more seasoned electricians to go to work. And I can, I personally have helped about 20 young people that live in this area find meaningful training. If they take advantage of the on-the-job training that, that the organization that I belong to offers, they can continue to bring financial stability to the area. So I'm, I'm in favor of the project.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Don Sleman. I also work for the IBW Local 26. Unlike Kyle, I don't live here. Kyle lives in a town. He lives a few blocks away. And sort of a couple of other of our folks who work at our training center there in Manassas. We have training centers in Roanoke, Manassas, and Lanham, Maryland. Our local union has doubled as a result of this industry, and I can't think of a better industry for working people because of its dependence upon skilled labor and the delivery of these buildings quickly and without any issues because of the nature of data. You can't have mistakes. And so these things are built with highly skilled workers, and also I can't compliment an industry better than this as far as mitigating problems. Water used to be an issue. Now, the 24 data center campuses under design are in construction, and northern Virginia, 23 don't use water. in Northern Virginia. 23 don't use water. They use a closed-loop non-invasive system. They've addressed, through engineering, noise problems. And for us, for me, us in the trade union, they've also addressed wage issues. There's a real problem in the construction industry, especially in the non-licensed crafts, that folks are paid, are seen as made independent contractors when they're not, hundreds at a time on the job. So they're responsible for their own unemployment insurance, workers' comp, and the social security. And so the data center industry has helped us mitigate that problem. We passed a law in Virginia, the private act of action, so we can sue companies, but we'd rather have folks like Kyle not spend their time going around looking to create lawsuits. We'd rather work with an industry that's going to try to prevent this. So the data centers are trying to help us prevent these bad practices in the construction industry from coming to the building their shell. On the guts, the electricians and the fitters, they've always used union labor. So this is, and these are great jobs. So these are jobs that, our training program is free to the participants. It's a five-year program. It's a day program, so you work nine days in the field. The 10th day, you come in to train, and you get paid as if you're on a job. When you graduate, you'll be making $62 an hour with another almost $30 in benefits. And we'd like to bring that to everyone in your community, and that's what Kyle does. He recruits young people, and we'd like to work with the school system in Germantle to bring those folks in. We worked with Germantle in Fredericksburg, where they set up a similar program they had here already, and we hired every single one of them. We have over 200 contractors as part of our system, and we represent almost 14,000 electricians. And it's this industry that's driving that growth. And this is the industry of tomorrow being performed today. And the cooperation between industry and labor, I've never seen before. I've worked 40 years in the labor movement. I worked in 39 states before I came back. I'm from Annandale originally. I live in Alexandria to come back to this area. And I watched the deindustrialization, globalization, NAFTA, CAFTA, permanent normal relations, China, and what it did to our communities. And this industry is the industry of tomorrow, where today they're working with skilled labor. We're working together to build great, fine jobs, and these are clean, safe jobs. And we don't, and you know, we've had folks working in this industry for 30 years. We don't have any cancer or hearing problems. We know it. We're self-insured. This is a wonderful industry. There's a great careers. We want to come here and offer it to the citizens of Culpeper, and we'd just like to thank you for looking into this industry. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last call. Close the public hand at this time. Approval of Culpeper Technology Campus Proffer Amendment. Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. So before you this evening is a report and recommendation for the approval of the Culpeper Technology Campus Proffer Amendment. I would like to go through some of the history, since there is a fairly long history that is associated with this report and recommendation. In March of 2023, council approved a rezoning for Culpeper Technology Campus. Included in that rezoning was a sound proffer that the developer would meet the sound standards outlined in Town Code at the time of the rezoning. In September of 2023, council approved a rezoning for the Copper Ridge Campus. And that rezoning, it included a sound proffer that was revised based on a standard based on DBA. And the reason why Copper Ridge made that revision is they had recognized and identified that the measuring of sound based on the outdated sound standard in the Town Code was a problem, which is why they made that change and was ultimately approved by council. So after further review, Culpeper Technology Campus concluded that their approved sound proffer, as outlined in the existing Town Code, was outdated, and they believed it was unenforceable and could create problems, not only for the town, but also for Culpeper Technology Campus. If nothing else, just in potential misunderstandings as far as whether they were meeting the sound proffer or not. So based on that, CTC amended their proffer to match the sound proffer that was approved by Copper Ridge, and that's what they submitted to the Planning Commission. In November of 2024, the Planning Commission, after conducting a public hearing, recommended approval of the proffer amendment and submitted it to council. In December of 2024, after holding a public hearing, the council forwarded this item to the Public Safety, Public Works, and Planning Community Development Committee for further discussion, postponing the decision until tonight on that issue. The Public Safety, Public Works, Planning Community Development Committee then requested that the matter be considered by an independent sound consultant. Staff hired Noise Control Engineering, which is a consultant out of Massachusetts, that, to the best of our knowledge, could provide that independent view and was not tied to any of the data centers and, you know, did not have any of those ties. We asked them to look at two different, two different things. One, to evaluate our existing noise ordinance and to provide guidance on whether we should, it should be modified, and if so, how it should be modified. And then secondly, we asked them to provide a recommendation on how council should proceed with the Culpeper Technology Campus Proffer Amendment. The reason it's important to ask them that second question is because we knew that with Culpeper Technology Campus, they currently had an approved proffer based on the existing ordinance. So just changing the existing ordinance does not change that proffer and would not affect the results of that proffer. So just summarizing the findings of the Noise Control Engineering's findings. And I would like to first make sure you realize that the entire memo from them is in your pocket, so the entire memo is there. But in 2.1, and I'll just read what they quote, it said, "The town of Culpeper has no choice but to update their noise ordinance as the antiquated octave band frequencies are no longer recognized. It is possible to update the limits based on updated octave band center frequencies, but this would require some interpretation in which there has been debate on how this, on how to do this. There are several old standards, white papers, and other references that make this difficult and will most likely result in litigation." And I think the reference to litigation there is if we change those proffer, or excuse me, change to the center band frequencies and then tried to enforce those on a, someone that is grandfathered to the old octave limits. I think that's what their intent was there. And paragraph 3.1, they stated, "Modern sound lever meters cannot and do not measure sound levels based on the antiquated octave band frequencies. Therefore, enforcing the current sound levels is impractical." This actually was somewhat of a surprise to staff. We thought that even though that this equipment may be difficult to find, there would be equipment out there if you, you know, went out and found it that could measure it based on our current standards, and evidently that is not the case. In their conclusion, 6.2, they stated, "As discussed previously, enforcement of the existing ordinance is impractical as there is no modern sound level meter that can provide results directly, which then would require interpretation of the levels and calculations that would most likely require litigation for clarification. Noise Control Engineering recommends that the Culpeper Technology Centers, it's really the campus, requests be considered a one-time situation and approved as it is in the spirit of the modern noise limits, while the town of Culpeper moves forward with the larger issue of modernizing the noise ordinance." As of today, Culpeper Technology Campus has made two revisions to the amendment that they have provided. They removed the exemption of noise standards for emergency generator maintenance testing, and they also removed the exemption for noise standards for emergency generator operation during a power shortage. They also provided a memorandum that further clarified how they will conduct the baseline condition testing, as well as the facility sound study and compliance testing, both at the facility when it's 50% occupied and then when it's 100% occupied. And that memo is also in your packet as well. So this evening, I see it as you have, you have two options. One, you can deny Culpeper Technology Campus's proffer amendment request. By doing so, Culpeper Technology Campus current proffer to the existing but antiquated octave band frequencies would remain in effect. Or two, you can approve Culpeper Technology Campus's proffer amendment request, and this would revise the sound proffers based on what was the approved proffer for Copper Ridge, with the exception of removing the exemption for noise standards for emergency generator maintenance testing and during power shortages. The amended recommendation before you is that council uphold the Planning Commission's recommendation for approval of proffer amendment RZ 5107 2024, which removes the restriction of sound measures by frequency band and replace it with restriction measurements by A-weighted decibel DBA and includes the applicant's subsequent removal of the exemption for noise standards for emergency generator maintenance testing and during a power shortage. Be happy to answer any questions. Also, Andrew is here to answer questions if you have them, as well as the applicant has members as well in the audience.
Any question? Thank you, Mr. Manager. Motion to approve the recommendation.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All right, go ahead.
I have a few questions. Andrew, under the exemptions, I guess subparagraph C. Lawn and site landscaping maintenance activities during the daytime. Above that, in B, is project site traffic, road maintenance, and project construction. But there is any specific times for that, although in Chapter 13, I believe, in the noise control, it's very specific about what times of the day the construction can't start until and then end.
There's nothing outlined within the proffer that defines that specific time. Chapter 13, the noise one, that's actually enforced by town police and is that subjective standard. So essentially, i-if the noise from that is able to be heard within a structure on an adjoining property, that would constitute a violation of the noise ordinance?
I think I'm more concerned about the hours. You know, nothing can start before 7:00 and everything has to end by 8:00, if I remember right.
So within Section 13.3 of Town Code, number 2 there states that the use of pneumatic machinery, chainsaws, or similar devices on residential parcel or parcel adjacent to a residential parcel, except between the hours of 7:00 a.m. through 8:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday and 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Sundays. And those are, would be when it would constitute a disturbance. So outside of those hours would constitute a disturbance for parcels adjacent to residential.
Good? Finished, John?
Do you have or know any history where we have created a carve-out for a corporation who is going to have special treatment for personal noise?
Not that I am aware of.
No.
Well, I will, to be clear, the proffers that are proposed relate to the zoning, and the zoning alone. They do not have any power over Chapter 13 and the ability to enforce the standards that are laid out here within Chapter 13. Correct. Correct. And we have proffers. They have put forward an alternate to our noise standard.
Not that I'm aware of, other than it was approved for Copper Ridge.
Anyone else? Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Schmidt?
Oh, you got one? I didn't see that.
So the same standard applies to the Copper Ridge as applies to the same proffer? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, except with Copper Ridge has two additional exceptions that this project would not have now. So Copper Ridge is exempted from noise standards during the testing of the emergency equipment and exempted during times of power shortage. This, the applicant has removed those two conditions to make their conditions slightly more restrictive than Copper Ridge's.
So they're more restrictive?
They are more restrictive than Copper Ridge's, yes.
Anyone else?
It'd be helpful to have a rereading of the motion before we vote on it. It'd be helpful, Mr. Mayor, if we could have a rereading of the motion before we vote on it. Just to be clear on what we're voting for.
All right. Motion to approve the recommendation of the Culpeper Technology Campus Proffer Amendment.
I think, I think he's asking, like, he's asking for the motion. What are you asking me to do?
We didn't do that.
I believe the motion's up on the screen. Do you want me to read that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
From the Planning Commission?
Well, the point of parliament, I think what is being asked is, are you just reading what the proffer, what the people who drew the proffer want? Or are you putting forward the amended recommendation?
The amended one right here.
Yeah, this is amended.
Right.
That's the amended recommendation.
Right. Got it? Everybody clear?
Can I also just make, I'd like to make a comment, and I appreciate the comments, and I really appreciate the idea of creating jobs in Culpeper, because the majority of people, you're right, are commuting outside of Culpeper. And it would be great to bring industries where we can have jobs in Culpeper that are more than, that are high-paying jobs and sustaining jobs more than what we have now, so people can live, work, have fun in Culpeper and not have to commute. Because we do have a lot of people commuting, because there's not that, there's less diversity of employment opportunities here in Culpeper than other places. So I just want to appreciate that, and I do want that for Culpeper.
I'd like to say something too. We definitely need jobs for these youngsters and adults. And this is really happening, you know, send them to school and all, get that proper training and all. So thank you. Roll call, please.
Jobs are important, and I really appreciate hearing about the work that many people are doing.
The work that many people are doing, however, what's in question here is not whether they're bringing jobs or internships. The question is, do our citizens have valid concerns in regards to noise? And are we addressing that adequately? Not whether or not this company creates jobs or brings jobs, that's not what's on the table tonight. Are we recognizing what the citizens of our community want? That's, to me, is the bottom line.
All right, anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I feel like we're sort of in a box here. Where we have an antiquated ordinance that we can't use, and we have a proffer that I think some of us would prefer to be a little more stringent, but we can't change or move the goalpost here in midstream. And if the attorney would keep me straight here on this. I mean, we can adopt anything we want or demand anything we want, but it wouldn't supersede what's already on the books. I'd like to see a slightly lower DB levels, but I don't know what we can do about it. If we say, say we deny the request, what happens?
Mr. Mayor, the question is, what happens if you deny the request? Then the existing proffer stays in place. There could be another request from the applicant for a different change, but we don't know that that would happen. But if they don't request an additional change, then unless you go to But if they don't request an additional change, then unless you go to a process of trying to amend it unilaterally, then you are looking at, which might affect their vested rights and so that would have to be done very carefully, you would be looking at a situation where the current antiquated standard would be the applicable standard for this property going forward.
Anyone else?
I have a comment. We, we do have information from other localities in their sound noise requirements and we're either below or at that. There's some jurisdictions that are higher than ours, so I think we're in line.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just want to agree that the noise is what is at hand tonight and at the same time, we can also appreciate all the comments from everyone in the audience, whether it's about jobs or noise. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, roll call?
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Short?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yell?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Abstain.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Olinger?
Aye.
Mayor Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Remickus?
No.
Councilmember Russell?
No.
Sorry, motion carries.
Resolution designated August the twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five as Culpeper Lafayette Days page.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Before you this evening is, as the mayor mentioned, a resolution designating August twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five as Culpeper Lafayette Days. If I may read for the record, whereas General Lafayette visited America from August fifteenth, eighteen twenty-four to September eighth, eighteen twenty-five, at a time when American patriotism and unity had begun to fade after the historic victory over Great Britain in the American Revolution. And whereas Americans still remembered Lafayette's role as a major general in the Continental Army commanded by George Washington, including battles in which he fought alongside brave veterans of the Culpeper Minutemen. And whereas Lafayette, although born a French aristocrat, was wholeheartedly devoted to the principles of liberty and equality enshrined in the American Declaration of Independence, strongly advocating freedom, recognition of rights for women and the abolition of slavery. And whereas Lafayette's return to visit America was the greatest celebration the young United States had yet seen, rekindling feelings of unity and patriotism in Virginia and throughout all the twenty-four states in existence. And whereas Lafayette visited Culpeper, Virginia on August twenty-second, eighteen twenty-five, arriving first for a military reception at Greenwood, the home of Judge and Mrs. John Williams Green located at nineteen thirty-one Orange Road, which still remains in the Green family, where he greeted and thanked Culpeper Revolutionary War veterans. And whereas Lafayette then proceeded to the town of Culpeper where he was honored by the citizens at the courthouse and at a town ball at Bell's Tavern located at three oh-six South Main Street, the current site of Culpeper Cheese Company. And whereas Lafayette traveled to Jeffersonton on August twenty-third, eighteen twenty-five for a final farewell to veterans and citizens of Culpeper County. And whereas many Culpeper citizens, including representatives from the Museum of Culpeper History, Culpeper County Public Schools, Culpeper Minutemen Incorporated, Culpeper Two-hundred-and-fiftieth Committee, Culpeper Renaissance Inc., Culpeper Department of Tourism and Town Economic Development, Daughters of the American Revolution, Sons of the American Revolution, Culpeper Baptist Church, Fairfax Masonic Lodge Number Forty-three, and others are making coordinated efforts to educate our community about the significance of the Revolutionary War, the principles of liberty, equality, freedom, and the historic visit of General Lafayette in August eighteen twenty-five. Now therefore, be it resolved that the council of the town of Culpeper, Virginia hereby declares August twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five as Culpeper Lafayette Days, designated as such for the education of our citizens and honoring the two-hundredth anniversary of General, General Lafayette's visit to Culpeper, adopted this eleventh day of March, twenty-twenty-five.
So moved. Any discussion? Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Yell?
Aye. Sixty-five thousand dollars, not two million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but just could have corrected.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Commute, communication and correspondence. Reminder, the FY twenty-six budget workshop special meeting is Wednesday, March the twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five at the EDC Building at ten-thirty AM for a meeting at Fallen Finance Committee. Anyone else has anything on this committee? If not, we are adjourned. All right. Good job, fellas.